With allegiance to the Latin of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody. On our agenda we do have, you know, legislation, law lines, applications, and the other additions that we need to discuss. So we're really right along with our agenda. We have a lot of people here today. Our ten o'clock is public comment. I know a lot of people are probably here wanting to public comment. Some of that's our agenda, to public comment if anything was not on. So firstly, if there was open to public comment, anything was not on, then we may opt to. So if there is public comment, not.
I don't know. Is the marijuana updates the agenda, the agenda comment?
Yeah, I haven't talked before, but I believe we can write this in a little bit. Well, I'd like to comment in regards to marijuana. Are you going to lap up the comment at that time, if that is happening?
Well, let's go to it.
Okay, alright, good.
I have a spike down there.
I'm going to go over the public comment at this time, if not, then I don't.
So the update on marijuana is in the agenda and that's going to be a public comment?
We will, at that time, give the factual information of the update currently being done. We have our schedule, and I'll public comment.
I'm telling you, Jim, where is that? They must come with an option.
If we go to part. Can we turn off the light?
I can't hear.
The power. On marijuana, could I, as a person wishing to make a public comment in regards to the issues in regards to a different entity within Lake County? Because that's not on your agenda. See, I don't know why it's all tangled web of public comments. People are here to make public comments. Is it not possible for me to make a comment in regards to a present situation here in Lakeview, Oregon, that I think that needs to be known?
Well, give it a shot, Mike. We're not here to shed anything.
I will not.
We're here to try to get the factual information before we engage into things that we have not not had advice from our legal counsel on the factual information of our ability to opt out different things with the marijuana.
I'm willing to wait. I'm willing to wait. Sorry to interrupt.
It's not to shed knowledge.
My fault, I'm sorry, sir.
It's to try to be able to get the update from our.
Okay.
So if there's no public comment, we'll move on with the agenda. My recommendation to the board is to move our legal updates to now.
I have a question more than a comment. Are we here to decide about a building or are we here to decide about a business?
We are here as the Board of Commissioners to hear what our options are and the factual information that the legislature gave us an opt-out clause for retail and wholesale. Marijuana is legal. We have nothing to do with that. But we'll get that information from our legal counsel. What would it take if we wanted to look at an ordinance or not look at an ordinance? But we're not here to discuss anything about any building, any individual corporation, business, or anything like that.
That would be a public comment.
If you want.
I mean, if it's not what we're here to discuss, then it'd be a public comment.
I see. That's, I mean, I'm sorry, Brad, that's clear.
Very clear.
I don't understand what you're saying, but what do you guys have jurisdiction over? Do you have jurisdiction over shutting these people down?
As far as, what people are you talking about, Mark?
The people that's coming in here to build this grain now.
Well, the only thing we have an option on is countywide for everybody. We're not talking one individual group. We're not talking any business in particular. We're talking about a decision that could impact the whole county.
Okay. On the opt-out, and correct me, my favorite legal counsel. If the county opted in or opted out, it'd be for all of Lake County except the two incorporated communities. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The two incorporated communities would like their own decision.
So those are?
Lakeview.
And Lakeview. Okay.
So I would like to public comment, close public comment as far as other things that are not on our agenda. At this time, if the board will indulge, I'd like to move legal updates to now. Is that okay, if you can? And then I want our legal counsel to give out the factual information we've been trying to gain on what our authority is as the Board of Commissioners. What we can do as far as opt-out goes, marijuana laws, the way they are now. And then we, at that time after we get that, hopefully that will answer some of the questions that people may have, that we may not even have exact answers to ourselves.
And with that, if we discuss the option to opt out, ramifications of that. And if we opt, don't opt out, which means opt-in, what is the ramifications of that? That gives a balance.
Okay. As you can see, my name's Jim Bailey. The, the subject matter is huge, and so my summary may not answer your particular question. So if you have a question, direct it to the board, and if they want me to address it, I can do that. To go over how we got to where we are. Marijuana became legal in Oregon as a result of statewide public vote. State allowed counties to pass a moratorium on retail and growing operate, retail and medical dispensaries until the law came into effect and actually even beyond that. We currently have a moratorium against medical marijuana dispensaries and recreational sales. That moratorium will expire on August 19th. One of the issues that the board has to decide is whether or not to extend that moratorium. So when I talk about moratorium from this point on, that's what I'm talking about. We have an ordinance with a moratorium that will expire on August 19th. As of July 1, recreational marijuana became legal in Oregon. There were several, several other laws that were passed following that to address the circumstances that were going to arise. So as of July 1, individuals can have at their home up to four plants and, if we get it exactly right, eight ounces at your residence and one ounce on your person outside of your residence. You cannot publicly display the marijuana either as a plant or as a product while it's being consumed in, in the public. So basically, you would have to do that at home. So that's where, that's where we are right now in terms of the legality of marijuana, its possession and consumption. August 19th, our moratorium will expire unless we extend it. One of the discussion points for the board is whether or not to extend that moratorium. That moratorium cannot be extended indefinitely. The law does not allow you to pretend that you are extending a moratorium when actually you are regulating or banning marijuana. The conditions that the board has to face now, as a result of what I've just described, that you can't extend it indefinitely, is that 180 days after the governor signed the bill into law, which is going to be December 27, counties and.
Say that date again, please.
December 27 of this year. Okay.
Hundred and eighty days after December 27, 2010.
That's the date. That's the date. Hundred and eighty days, and hundred and eighty days will occur on December 27.
2050.
Yes. By that date, the county, well, back up again. As part of introducing legalization of marijuana throughout Oregon, a compromise bill was passed that stated that any county that voted against legalization by 55% of the population or more, had the option of opting out of the marijuana laws not for private consumption, but for medical dispensaries, growing operations, retail sales, all those other things. In other words, the county or local jurisdiction would act as a dry county in this, in respect of alcohol. You can't purchase it in the area. Within 180 days, and the deadline is December 27, the local jurisdictions or the counties must decide to either opt out by local governing or decision or refer that decision to a public vote. So there are two things that are possible, and the, the choice has to be made by December 27. Either the Lake County Board of Commissioners can decide on its own to ban those other marijuana activities or refer that to a vote of the general population of Lake County.
Isn't there one more option of doing nothing?
Yeah, yeah.
There's three options.
Doing, doing nothing would allow the current state regime to just continue.
Does the vote have to occur before December 27?
No.
So you had to schedule it for a year or so later?
I am sure there are limits, but I'll give you an example of what's going on in Deschutes County. They are deciding whether or not to initiate a moratorium that would go until next November, at which time the general population would vote on whether or not to allow those other.
Next meaning 2016?
2016, November 2016. Now, they have to make that decision before December 27 of this year, but that's what they're considering. They haven't made a, made a decision yet. The effect of opting out of any part of the new law, which allows growing, production, wholesale, retail, opting out of any part of those, if you can choose any one of them, will eliminate any tax revenues from coming to Lake County or that local incorporated entity. So we can't, if you want to share in whatever revenue, and that's a very big question, Mark, if we outlaw any part of that, if we opt out of it, then the revenue will not come to the area that is opted out. The only thing I will add is between now and the decision, whether that is by the board or by a public vote, I've overstated. Between now and January 4th, when OLCC will have its regulations in place, and they will be the regulating body, if we extend the moratorium, then the only thing that goes on in Lake County is recreational use. No growing operations, and those are, even if we don't do anything, those are not allowed until OLCC sets up its regulatory scheme. That will not happen until January. What it will look like, we don't know, because the rules have not been proposed and have not been accepted yet. So we don't know, for example, what size growing operation will be allowed in 2016. We don't know what the regulation will be for processing and packaging. We don't know how much the licensing will be for any of those operations. None of those things have been decided yet. And that's probably why, in fact, I'm sure it's why, Deschutes County is extending its moratorium until November 2016, because retail operations probably, almost certainly, will not be operating until the second half of 2016, according to what OLCC assumes.
With the exception of those municipalities within the area?
Well, it has to be regulated by OLCC, so unless OLCC's regulations allow it and someone does it very quickly. But the guess is right now, coming from the state, is that you will not have, you will likely not have retail operations until the second half of 2016. That's their assumption. And so my speculation, which I think is pretty solid, the reason why Deschutes County is putting this off to a popular vote on November 2016 is because then, by that time, you will see what are the regulations, what are the effect of the regulations, what are the effects of retail operations, where are they, how many are they, and how things are working. That's my guess, is so the public can see, well, is this a good thing or a bad thing? Should we wait on this?
Jim, does that include the municipalities within the county?
Well, does what?
Then? Is it, is it a non-medicinal counties? I mean, community or?
This is just the Deschutes County.
Right, the county, but it's available in Deschutes County, just not in the county jurisdiction. It's available in.
Incorporated communities.
Right. So it's available there. It's not being, so the community itself, I guess, has the opportunity to extend open arms to investors to come into the community versus the county at this point? In, in that situation, and I'm sorry to get off.
No, they don't have the, the opportunity to do that until January, and the regulatory scheme is in place by OLCC. So you can't have a growing operation. That's still illegal of beyond four plants.
But recreational sales will be available here in a couple of months.
From, from medicinal dispensaries.
Right.
They may sell recreational marijuana. That won't be the case. Well, that will probably be the case after January, but they will only be able to sell their excess supply to recreational users. And then individual retail outlets would be selling recreational marijuana. What that would look like and whether or not Deschutes County were to opt out and then were not, or Lake County were to opt out and then were not, or vice versa, that hasn't been decided yet.
But there is variance right now. Then is open to it where, at this point?
I don't know. I couldn't tell you what.
Well, I mean, they allow medicinal, so they're going to allow recreational if those dispensaries so desire to sell it.
Your guess is as good as mine.
That's the state law.
Well, they certainly can do it on October 1st, right? I'm talking about in January, what the regulatory scheme will be. That's going to change.
No, but for October, November, December, and then all of 2016, recreational sales will take place in Deschutes County and possibly could take place here with present laws in Lakeview.
I have no comment on that.
What happens to the medicinal plant that's already in place here, that's growing?
There, I'm not aware.
There is a plant just south of town down here has authorization to grow marijuana for medicinal purposes.
Or, or is it on the south?
I don't know. I don't think so. I think he's selling it. He's got quite a greenhouse down there. I've checked with the officers. They said he has a license to grow it. Just curious to what this law affects him.
I have no idea. To my knowledge, there's not a dispensary in Lake County.
There's not a dispensary. It's a grow, they're growing it medicinally and selling it.
The medical card they're allowed to, certain things, Rob, that I can't speak to. I don't have that.
Brad, could I ask a question about the, the voting process, I guess? I don't know. When I've read, and I've read quite a bit of information, tried to keep informed on this subject. It's, it's hard, but it seemed to me that when it comes to having elections or votes, public votes on the question, that the, the laws themselves pretty well spelled out that the elections, if there are going to be some, will be at the next general election, and that, of course, is November of 2016, that, that you can't, you know, there's an opt-in that probably, if you want to, if you want to levy local taxes, you have to actually have an election to do that. You can't just automatically do that as a county, town, or anybody. But any of those elections have to be at that election? Is that correct? If you had an election, if you had it on the primary ballot, for example, next spring, that would not be binding, because the legislation specifically says that elections will be at the general election of 2016. Is that right? I don't know. Okay, I'd have to see if that actually says that.
And then are you talking about the additional 3% tax that gets referred to?
All of them.
Are you talking about the, putting the opt-out?
Yeah, I, I guess I thought, I think, I should say, that from my reading of it, that it specifically says that if you're going to levy a local tax, you have to do that at the next available general election, and that's not till November 2016.
That's too different.
And that's the tax, and then the opt-out.
We don't want to confuse that.
No, I agree, but then on the opt-out part, I think, you know, I read it to say the same thing, that the opting out, if you either, if, if you opt out, county, you can do that by ordinance. You know, it could be referred to the voters or whatever if they wanted to, but you can, you can opt out. But if you elect to put the question to the voters as to whether or not they want Lake County to opt out, that has to be at the next general election, I believe.
I'll turn it back over to legal counsel, but the way I understand what he just said is if we've decided to put a moratorium, waiting until election of 2016, that's basically saying the same thing you are. Will you be putting it on the general election for November 2016? Is that what I heard you saying, Mr. Bailey?
That's right. That's the example. What Ray's asking, or his point is, that would be the only option if the board itself does not choose to pass an ordinance. The only option would be to defer it to a public vote until November 2016. That's right, and then that, that option, that, that opt, or that moratorium though only applies to retail sales. It doesn't apply to all those other things, does it? The commercial distribution and all those things? Yeah, our current moratorium does. It does? Yeah.
Back to Rob's question about a person that has multiple plants. And anybody here knows more than I do, but my best guess is if Terry has a medical marijuana prescription, names you as the caretaker, you can grow about three or four plants for Terry. And then if Dan has a medical prescription and named you as the caretaker, you can grow additionally another three or four plants for Dan, and so on to right. So that's why one person.
So that could be what he's doing. I think the legislature did limit that in the last session. It's limited to a degree now, but I do say a cooperative or a collective.
Yeah, five or six, I think.
Okay.
So we did talk about the additional 3% that we can ask for, which is if there's.
Right, there's going to be a state tax on marijuana in January. If I'm not right, it's going to be 25%. And that will change eventually, but the local, you could tax, you could pass an ordinance to tax local retail sales for an additional 3%.
Not in an ordinance, but.
Right, but that would be, that would be the, the, a local tax. It would come right back to the county as opposed to coming through the state via its distribution.
That's, that's if we permitted retail sales.
Yes, you, yeah, you have to do that.
So the board pretty good with the.
So far.
Okay.
I just want to hear the whole update. Are we through?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
You can wake up now, Dan.
Yeah, I can wake up.
We do, we do have a couple letters that, one from Mr. Kogar and one from Mr. Troutman. I don't see Mr. Troutman here or John, that they both want to be part of their record.
I could have one other thing, just so everyone's clear on this, because there's something confused about it. Marijuana is still illegal on the federal level. And as a result of that, there are practical effects on anyone who has either a growing operation or a sales operation. The biggest practical effect is that a marijuana-producing, packaging, distributing, or selling operation cannot make the normal business deductions from their tax returns that any other business could do, because according to the IRS, it's an illegal operation. You cannot make deductions for that. So paying your employees, paying for maintenance, paying for building, anything like that that's part of your commercial operation, you cannot deduct. And so whoever is running that has to take those additional steps to make it a profitable operation.
Why do you make that statement at a commissioners meeting when it doesn't impact the county at all? That's a personal, that's a personal decision on the part of the company, and it's reporting to the IRS. It has nothing to do with the county.
No, it makes, the reason I thought of it was Commissioner Winters was going to refer to a couple of letters we received in which people have made claims about the size of an operation or how many people it will employ. The practical limitation of that in terms of IRS regulations would affect how large someone's operation would be, just as the OLCC regulations would affect how large the operation would be.
Isn't that a private decision for the private company to make, not the commissioner?
No, no, it's an economic decision.
For the company?
Right, but it's a response to assumptions in letters that the board has received about what allowing marijuana sales would do for the county. It's a big question mark.
If it's not relevant to the county, why worry about it?
It's a big question mark. That's just the point.
I agree with that for the person who might be engaged in the activities, but not for the county.
Well, the, the letter will be submitted into record. You'll have a chance to read the, the letter. And whenever we receive letters like that, a lot of times we talk with our legal counsel. The legal counsel answers our questions, and we refer to those letters.
All right, the legal counsel will tell you it's not relevant to your jurisdiction, so don't worry about it?
He does not.
He doesn't?
We, we, we ask the questions. He gives his answers to our questions.
Well, I, I need to. Are we in public comment period now? It sounds as though, I'd like to make a public comment.
Just hang on, this lady over here has been waiting very patiently. So if the board has.
I have a question, a clarification, on the federal law, which is no, and the state law, which is yes. When it comes down to, if the county opted out, it's a mute point, except for the recreational sale as far as the federal. If the county opted in and permitted, going back to Al's comment, if we just say, go forth, it's state law, do what you want, is the county violating federal law? Or is it the individual, when they set up a business, violates federal law?
The individual violates with the sale. The county, by not enforcing it, it's not a violation of the law. The question is whether or not federal law trumps the state law that allows the sale. That question has not been decided yet. There is litigation coming out of Colorado, or, I'm sorry, states surrounding Colorado that has raised that issue, and that has not been decided yet.
So if the board is good with any questions, we'll open it up to the public. Please state your name for the record and then ask your question.
Sure. I'm Pat Duff, and I run Rock Horse Park and Horse Ranch. We're, I think, the only smoke shop in the county that sells accessories for smokers of that nature. And I've had the place for about three years. It's a profitable business. And it's been in business for over 25 years. And it's, it's proven to be a very well-organized and operated, I think, business over the years. We don't just run that. It's a campground. It's a concert venue. It's a little restaurant. We have a lot of small operations going on there. And we're looking very seriously at the opportunity to participate in what I think is going to be a really broad economic development, not just for us and not just for our county, but, you know, statewide and probably nationwide. It looks like there's a lot of legislation being tossed around at the federal level, too, and they're probably going to come around, it looks like. And right now, there are really serious problems around tax deductions, banking, insuring. Those are, I mean, I have a lot at stake as a business owner, and I'd be putting a lot on the line to make a decision, even to take advantage of my state's laws, even if I could get my county to go along with the state's laws, okay? And I see those difficulties. There, there, I have a lot at stake. But it's, it's probably a really profoundly good thing for my business if everything goes that way, you know? I probably have easily five people a day come in and ask, when are you going to be a dispensary? Do you, are you dispensing yet, you know? And I guess in October, the places where it is legal, we'll be able to sell out of their dispensaries a quarter ounce a day to a person who comes in for a recreational purchase. We look very seriously at the medicinal angle, too, but then you put a moratorium, so that's kind of shelved in our department because of that. But, you know, even if I were to sell an ounce a day, we were kind of roughly running the numbers. It would probably be a good deal more than that, but even if I were to only sell to four of those five customers who are now just asking, okay, I figure we'd be generating about $2,500 a year to your 3% yearly, Bob, just out of my store. And so that's, I, what I'd like, I don't mean to just go on and on, but has there been a really significant economic analysis of this from the county's level of what it is that we would be opting out of, by foregoing these tax dollars? And not just the potential for the 3%? I suppose you could opt for 2% or 1% too, if you wanted to, maximum the 3%, whatever you wanted to do. But then also, what, your portion of the, okay, it starts at 17%, I suppose, in January. Maybe we have a tax-free period in counties where it's legal between October and January. And then you have 17% potentially taxed of all the vendors where it's legal, and then you get some share of it. Do we have an idea how much money you're? it's legal, and then you get some share of it, do we have an idea how much money you're considering writing off?
I, I've done my little bit of analysis on that, I haven't had anybody do the analysis, but if the first year projection, and it should grow more dollars, but it's around $30 million statewide that'll be created, and I only sorta analyzed for what would come to Lake County, so 40% of that 30 million, they have to take, the state has to take their administrative cost off, but out of these 30 million, so 40% goes to the Common School Fund, which would be about 12 million. Common School Fund, I may be wrong, but it's around $7 billion, so it'd be...
7.5 billion.
7.5 billion, so 12 million into a 7.5 billion dollar budget.
Lakeview's, or Lake County's?
That's Common School Fund goes to statewide, so 12 million, what would come down to Lakeview, depends on, depending population base.
None if you opted out, right?
None if you opt out, so that's my rough analysis, impact there will be some to the school, don't know the total amount, 20% goes to mental health, alcohol and drug treatment, so that'd be 6 million statewide that'd be distributed to all of the counties and everything that have it opt out, and then 10% would go to local law enforcement, distributed throughout the state for implementation of the new law. Now, the other percentages I didn't even come close to working on, they go to other things, but those are the three that I looked at that could impact Lakeview, and so, yes, it's better than zero, but it's not a huge amount that the general public thinks is gonna come directly here.
Can we do a significant economic analysis of that before we decide whether to opt in or opt out? It seems to me it would be feasible, but maybe I'm wrong.
You know, there's so many unanswered, I think that's a very good point, there's so many unanswered things, of what, what is the state gonna take off the top for admin? That's the first thing we need to know. If the revenue's projected 30 million, what is the state gonna take for admin? I have no idea, is it 1 million, is it 5 million, is it half of it, we don't know. And this is all just what I personally worked on, I haven't asked anybody else to, I was just trying to get my own information. Now, I believe after the first year, the $30 million number will rise because of, there will be more retail sales, there'll be more wholesale and all that, so my analysis is just at that, I wanna be fully clear, that's only at the $30 million, maybe 50 million the next year, so it could progress, could go down, but I think it's projected to progress. So, that's sort of a long-winded, my analysis of what I've done, so I want it built, at least in my mind, know the impact locally.
Well, locally, take a stab, how much money are we writing off, if we opt out of anything? Because really, if we opt out of anything, we opt out of everything, right?
I can't give that an educated guess, because I don't know if the state's gonna distribute that money by population, or if there's gonna be a minimum go to each county, and the only thing I can refer to there is, is some funds we get from the state are population-based, some of them is a minimum amount that comes on other funds that we give, so I can't give a good educated guess there.
I have one other concern around this, and that is that, if I read correctly, the town of Lakeview did not put a moratorium on dispensaries, I saw a November document that pretty much they...
Have to defer that to town manager.
Pretty much, they, well, somebody can contradict that if that is the case, but the reason I've been asking, and if you don't mind contradicting me in a second, is if in fact that document that I was presented with is correct, and the town of Lakeview didn't put a moratorium on dispensaries, as a separate matter from recreational matters, I don't guess there's a dispensary already, but there potentially could be. To me, as a business owner in the north end of the county, if the county makes a decision that they're gonna opt out countywide, and yet the town of Lakeview makes a decision that they're gonna opt in, so that now the town of Lakeview has the opportunity to run these distributions and run these, you know, various different types of uses, because it's legal here, that puts South County at a significant advantage to the already economically disadvantaged North County, and I, as a resident of North County, I have a problem with that. So, I'm just throwing that out there to, you know...
So, Mike, your town council, do you wanna answer that?
Well, I, I'll just make my comment, it'll be inclusive, as I said, what I have to comment on is, I think primarily the factual situation that the town of Lakeview is in right now. I appreciate the federal mentions, being a licensee of federal government bureaucracy for over four decades now, believe me, I understand the way the federal government operates in this industry, I don't, I couldn't even start to suspect, and I've talked very in-depth with Senator Wyden's office as of recent, yesterday, but I do know there are potential investors in our community, I've talked to one this morning who's very excited, he's not here in the room, there's other investors who I, I look around and see in our room, and I'm very proud that people are looking at our community for economic development. I serve as economic development liaison for the town of Lakeview, and I think that the county is a part of our community, I don't want them to be separate. I listened in our last council meeting, as John Bogardis, our town council, schooled us on how we should work in consistent mode with the county in regards to something such as this. So, I come carrying forward factual information, things that we're up against, I hope it doesn't get too lengthy, there's a lot of things that enter into this, but believe me, I've been on the firing line, I've been fighting with compassion for...
I'm in the role yet.
Well, I've been fighting for compassion, which I know you guys kinda sidestep the issue, you heard some comments, but you threw your moratorium, you sidestepped the issue of dispensaries for medicinal patients in our county, and they've been not able to do so in the county, and I, all my time fighting for compassion for those 105 or whatever patients, or patients that would travel through that might qualify from Oregonian standpoints, I fought for that because I do have compassion for those people, and we never discussed recreational marijuana, which is what we've had thrown in our face once again by our legislature, they did it to us on the, I'm very disgruntled with our state legislature for throwing it back in our hands. Federally, they've kinda stepped aside and said, the states have voted it in, and I accept our state vote, I accept our state statutes as a counselor who is supposed to oblige those, just as you operate by Oregon statutes. Sometimes that federal government scares you, oh, could they take money away? Well, if they do, they've got a lot of disgruntlement going on too, nationwide, so, you know, you have to take your stance, if you're not powerful enough to take that stance, don't, sit back and wonder if you'll be elected next time, and that's what we all, as public officials, are supposed to do, look out for our constituents in the areas that we serve, and economic development is of most importance right now, I see it, there's cries from every individual in this room, every business owner in our county, every business owner in our town, we need help. There's efforts underway, positive efforts to make that happen, we have people that are coming to our community, who are willing to make investments in our community, but do you think there's a positive attitude going out right now in Lakeview, in Lake County? Well, let's wait, we can wait till December 27th, what kind of opportunity does that portray to an investor, a potential investor who might move on to another community that's a little more welcome? And flashes the neon sign that says, please come, we welcome you, we need economic development of a new, and I know it's hard for us all to absorb, believe me, through that four or five decades I've been in broadcasting, I've heard, conveyed the arguments on the air, and I've heard arguments for and against, in regards to recreation, I'll go ahead and come out, I've never really given my stance. I support recreational marijuana in the state of Oregon for two reasons, and that is the black market. I've had my grandfather chief of police in Phoenix, Arizona, who knows what the black market operations of drugs can do, my cousin, who is no longer with me, was the sheriff of the county that I grew up in, he lost his battle because of what he was confronted with, the black market in New Mexico, as close as they are to the border. I'll just say that with that in mind, my recreational viewpoint is for our own nation, for our own county, for our own town, please, let's look at the safety that we can provide our officers by not having to deal with the black market anywhere, and Oregon law is written to do away with the black market, and I promise it will do it if it's possible. Okay, I'm getting a little bit off of my regards, but factual information, I did tell you my standpoint, the other thing in regards to recreation was the economic, and I did voice that too, so I guess I'm in support of recreational marijuana in the state of Oregon as a legal industry, because it is, July 1st became a legal industry, the OLCC and the OHA have agreed on certain terms to allow operations to happen right here in Lakeview, because under present law in Lakeview, Oregon, a dispensary that fit all the criteria that the town of Lakeview laid out, time, place, and manner, and that's all you guys have any control over in your county, if you so opt in, is time, place, and manner, we did that, we went through it, I was on the firing line, believe me, but the council as a whole went forward with dispensaries to be located in our community, I guess through compassion perhaps of those 105 people and others in our Oregon state that might be able to use it. And opened, I didn't expect we would have one, I'm sorry, didn't expect we would have one open, I didn't, I didn't expect one, you know, economically, I don't think it's viable for, I've been in business, and it's kinda tough in business in Lake County period for a lot of people, I don't think that a recreational marijuana dispensary would make a living very well in our county either, but I think that we shouldn't turn away business, we shouldn't turn away economic development. And so, in regards to what we're up against with our dispensary approval for medicinal sales, under all the auspices of our state statutes, our new time, place, and manner statutes that we established under ordinance here in the town of Lakeview, as of the point that a licensee can get approval through the state, OHA, for medicinal licensing, which shouldn't take long, a few months, I would think, so by the end of the year, while perhaps the town is working on agricultural zoning, because we have none, where we might be inviting to outsiders who would like to come in and bring agricultural, whether it be marijuana or anything else, other types of agricultural products to our community, where it's economically happening, we've got people that are investing in Lakeview, I'd like to see Lake County go ahead and consider themselves as part of the same community, along with John Bogardis and the county councilists, you should stay together in your consistency, and I cry to you for economic development's sake in that regard, and my notes I've not paid any attention to, but as I said, the state has taken away a lot of our rights, and I don't oblige those, I'd like to drive 65 miles an hour, I like that idea, and we're gonna get an opportunity Easter inside, but if the state continues to draw those lines, there goes the Confederacy and the Union, and here we are with civil war, not in football, but we're doing it right here in our state, statewide, so let me finish up and I'll get out of the way, because I know my council got here tired of hearing me reiterate my feelings on medicinal marijuana, and I walked out because I figured they were tired, but then I was scolded for walking out. Anyways, the fact is, an investor right now, I talked to one this morning, as I said, and he's willing to count, he thinks that this county, not just marijuana-wise, but everything that we have going, our geothermal, that we have great assets in, there's gold in them, our deals, and that could be just the geothermal tick that makes it work, as we've already been shown by investors who have shown an interest in our area because of that, and if we offer them geothermal, and we offer them a welcome sign, we welcome you, make it flash, please come to us, we want 200 jobs, we want whatever amount of jobs you bring, whether it be one, two, three, or four, and so...
I gotta ask, have you researched on the geothermal, and if there's any federal dollars used on the geothermal, if it's allowed to be used for...
That, the geothermal, well, we have separate options, there's been no money on some options, and we have, we have other resources within the town of Lakeview that we're not utilizing right now, so perhaps we could use geothermal entities that we've not promised elsewise to other entities, yeah, we've done some research on it, and we've talked about it as a town manager and a counselor, Ray and I, in regards to what's happening economically in our community, and that's why I'm here voicing my opinion, the legislature says you have the opportunity to go along with prohibition, well, it didn't work, we've had prohibition on alcohol before, that didn't work, we turned that around, and so, you know, now they're asking for you to continue with prohibition on something that's legal industry in our state, and I ask you to at least accept our state laws, abide by them, and see if we can make something happen in our county that will be worthwhile, because whatever leadership has been happening, and I'm a part of that, I didn't know that we were heading downhill to the degree that we're heading down, but I've served as a councilman now for two appointed years, and then two elections, and so I've got a feel, and I know that the public wants something to happen, and it's not happening right now in Lake County, and this is a potential industry we could grasp a hold of and invite welcomingly, buy now, not delaying, I mean, you gotta send a welcome sign out, or they're gonna start looking elsewhere and see where their liabilities are when the OLCC gets in line with what's gonna happen in our state, hey, we've got an invitation down the road, sorry, it looks much better, you guys miss out, there goes the jobs, there goes the, perhaps a few dollars, as you say, Brad, it's been discounted on down the line through the state funds, we may not get that big a share, but you're getting none if you opt out and you tell these investors to go away, you are getting rock bottom none, and that's where we've been for a while, we're not getting people coming in, there's promise, Red Rock may do it, I'm, you know, I've been involved in that with you, Brad, and I hope that it all comes to fruition, but y'all have heard enough of me, I could go on, I don't wanna have to walk out.
I have one follow-up question, because you're a councilperson, and you talk county and the town...
And, and, let me, before you go into, I can't talk on behalf of my council, I'm only 20%.
Ben, you're leading me to believe that the townies, or the city of Lakeview, the town of Lakeview, I'm sorry, not the city, basically, is not gonna opt out.
Well, I'll tell you right now, the only way that I would opt out would be to turn to those people that came to me asking for compassion, there's 105 of them, I didn't talk to all of them, but I've talked to a lot of them, I'm at the fair, I'm at different places, you know, celebrations in downtown, and believe me, I got hit with a lot of comments during our discussions over at town hall, and I'll tell you that I see it a little differently, I hear comments from just the general public that has nothing to do with medicinal, but there's compassion out there, and do you think that I wanna turn to those people and say, no, we're gonna opt out, tough luck, guys? No, because that's pretty much what it would be doing right now, by us opting out, because it's hypocritical to allow one and not the other.
I appreciate that, but does the town have it on their agenda to...
I'll tell you, I have a recording, I aired it on the air this morning, it was in our public meeting when we got a new mayor, I was scolded on my stance on marijuana, but at the end of the meeting, the newly-elected mayor by Sharon Faulkner and Michael Hughes, they heard their mayor in the meeting and then aired it this morning, that she strongly supported medicinal, I'd hope she wouldn't turn to those and not be non-compassionate now after we've stepped into that arena, and then also...
Mike left without that, though.
No, no, and then also the...
Linda Conroy, and just a question now, when they do, if it is passed and we're allowed to sell recreational, will it be just like a liquor store, one per population? Is that my understanding, is like a liquor store, they can only have one because of the size of the population? Will it be similar to that?
There are no regulations yet.
Not even proposed.
No regulations.
Uh-huh. And, I mean, I, I kind of agree, and I know everybody in here wants to make a little statement, but I just, I think it's here, and I don't know how we could possibly turn down the economic value of it.
Mr. Ford?
Thank you very much. I don't wanna be a lot-winded about it, I don't wanna look narrowly down the path, but the facts of the matter is, is that if, we need to look at the overall picture, no one's mentioned about the 200 employees, that could be making anywhere around $20,000 each, that could support the businesses in our community. No one's talked about the taxes on the housing that they will be purchasing or living in, that will be new homes here, which is taxes, dollars that will go to our community. I've been in discussion with the investors, and I've asked them to assist Lakeview in producing housing for potentially the biomass plant and the gold mine that are coming, and we don't know where they are, I agree, this is not something solid, but they said their investors will help us make that happen, and so they are a very integral part of the beginning of our survival, and creating jobs and people being solvent, so I'm very supportive of them because of the support that they're trying to give us. Also, in a meeting at our Rotary, they spoke and gave us some insight as to their intent. Their intent is to bring in medicinal manufacturing down the road, that would be scientists, lab technicians, that will be putting together a formula and packaging process to make it legal for medicinal purposes. We're looking at some pretty significant ranges here, and that helps everybody. Now, as far as how that money's distributed, sounds like to me they're tax-free, we get all of it, we're not gonna be anybody putting anything in a bank and claiming it because it's illegal, well, let's take advantage of it while we can. The idea is, is that I'm very for business and the support of the community, so that we can all survive, as well as our schools. The one thing I am concerned about, if you, if you put your head in the sand, you support the black market, if you stand up and say we need to stand here and take control of this... If you stand up and say, we need to stand here and take control of this product because we know we can't control people, and do what we can to control the product. We will protect our kids from the backdoor seller of black market. And that's my biggest concern. Rest of it all comes into play, but our futures before us, we need to protect them. That's all I have to say.
Hear, hear.
Yay.
I'm not an eloquent speaker, so I have prepared something. As we all know, a big discussion is facing our local voting jurisdictions in the near future, and that's marijuana. I have visited with all three of you recently to discuss my position on the subject and I would like to make, you know, part of the public record. Personally, I'm not concerned about the retail side of it. It doesn't affect me, it doesn't interest me, anything. What I care about is the manufacturing, processing, and wholesale distribution to get the product to market. There is going to be a market for it in the state of Oregon. I mean, there's just no doubt there is. And I believe it would be a good idea to seriously consider tapping into that market by allowing the manufacturing, processing, along with wholesale distribution here from Lake County. I think we have to take a hard look at the possible economic benefits that are out there with marijuana. In my mind, it is no different than a project like Red Rock in that a company will be manufacturing a product ultimately for sale in the general marketplace. The same economic benefits such as jobs and tax generation would accrue to Lake County as it would from any other manufacturing project. As a local businessperson, having invested a fair amount of money in the community within the last three years, I cannot afford to be blind to the economic benefit that more jobs would bring, no matter what my personal feelings I have on the subject matter. And I see a potential for marijuana to bring jobs to Lake County.
Good point, Mr. Walz.
Thanks, Commissioners. Jim Walz, I'm representing your advisory, economic advisory committee. And at our last meeting, after seeing how quick Harney County moved on an opt-out, I was asked if we took a vote on how we felt this was. And this is basically how the committee felt. The legal issue, the vast majority of us in that committee voted against it. But now, that's no longer the question. Now, it's an economic development question. And that's where we're at. I think opting out won't cause any less to come into this county or anything else. It's gonna come because the state has it. So it's an economic, and we support that. And the committee voted, three abstained, two because of federal ties, and I believe one was family matters, just voted against it, didn't want to see it for his kids. I totally understand that. So, but from, so it was opt-out, so it wasn't a majority vote, or total vote, one hundred percent, but three abstained. So I think that's where we're at. It's an economic development, we do have investors to come here, they are gonna create jobs. I hope, out of the three potentials we have, I've prayed that we get one. Because our record hasn't been too good up until now, but if two or more comes in, boy, I'll sell it right then. But anyway, you know, and I think talking to the Forty-Second Group and the ones looking there, they're willing to work through you like not having retail sales in the county. I think I heard that in the presentation at Rotary. So, you know, I think we opened the door to some dealings with investors coming in, but not to totally opt out, would be the recommendation from your advisory committee.
Don't know who I think was...
Thank you. My name's Elizabeth Chrisley, and I'm here because I work with families and children. And through the spring and summer months, something that I do personally is I collect coats for the youth in this community. And I collect them because every winter, I find kids who don't have coats. And I also always maintain a case of corn dogs in my freezer for kids who are wandering on the weekends and don't have a breakfast or a lunch. So my plea is with you to please, please consider this economic development because of the jobs that are, will be available, that can support families. And that's my plea for you.
Jan.
Yes, I'm Jan Wright, I live in Lakeview. And my concern isn't, you know, I'm lousy with money, and I agree with all of the economic development statements, totally. But my concern is more cultural. And statistics are coming out showing that violent crime is declining in states that have legalized marijuana. Teenage youth is, has not increased with the availability of legal marijuana. We're just becoming a better society. Willie Nelson, one of my heroes. John O'Keefe from Skokie. Well, they changed their minds, you know? So we all can change. Change is hard, but we can do it. So please, support it.
Ray, then Randy.
Yeah, thanks, Brad. I wanted to reiterate what Councilor Warren said, and that is that, with just a little bit of addition, I guess, with what the town of Lakeview has done, and that is that we originally did adopt a moratorium on the medical marijuana by May first of 2014, which was when it needed to be done, according to what we understood at least. And then, we fairly quickly, and it was in November ultimately, when after probably three meetings, I think, at least three meetings, the town council decided that they were going to impose their own additional standards in addition to state law on medical dispensaries and remove the moratorium. And they did that. And our standards are not a lot different, but they're a little more strict than state law. What they, part of that discussion, as I recall, was, you know, we can, we can do nothing. Ultimately, we thought, you know, that was before Measure Ninety-One, I guess, but we thought that, you know, we have an opportunity to exercise some local control and actually direct how these dispensaries will operate, or we can elect to do nothing and state law will eventually control how those are operating. I think, now, I'm gonna talk personally. I am the town manager and everybody, of course, will equate it with that, so there's not much difference. But I think that what we've been given here is an opportunity to exercise some local control, counties, cities, and we can opt out, which is essentially saying, we don't know, or we don't, we don't know what to do about this, or we don't want to do anything about this. But you know what opting out does, really says, you know, City of Klamath Falls, Bend, Shus County, wherever it is that's the next local jurisdiction that opts in, we'll let them write the rules, particularly about retail sales. You know, do we not know what retail sales should look like in Lake County? People are going to buy it, you know, it's legal, they're going to go someplace and they're gonna purchase it. So we're saying to this, I'll just, for the heck of it, say the City of Klamath Falls. City of Klamath Falls knows better than we do as to what they want those retail sales to be, who should buy them, what hours, what locations. I think we should exercise local control. I think you guys should exercise local control and look at how you would like to manage that retail sale, instead of to say, no, we don't want anything to do with it because we don't, maybe we don't know how to do it. I think you need to stay in and look at how you do regulate that. I think the other thing that happens, and it's been mentioned, you know, I reiterate all of the economic development things that have been said, and I agree with that. I think another thing that happens, though, if you opt out, is you encourage the black market in the Lakeview, Lake County area. If you opt in, it'll be available at a controlled environment, as you may direct. If you opt out, a lot of people maybe aren't going to go to Klamath Falls or Bend or wherever it is and purchase, but somebody will buy a lot of it as they do today.
We're not changing the law, any house with somebody twenty-one years older can have four plants.
Absolutely. A lot of people aren't gonna grow it, but they're gonna buy it anyway. And some of them may go and buy it at a retail outlet that is licensed, but a lot of it is going to come in and continue a black, or as I think it's been referred to, maybe a gray mark, a gray market. There's going to be this underground market, and that is illegal, and that gives you another, another aspect of this that you now need to regulate or enforce, but you've opted out of any tax money to do any enforcement. So I just think you need to be cautious about opting to not have any local control. And one final, I was gonna ask Jim a question, too.
So Jim, if we went the direction the town went, put regulations on local control, does that trigger any of the opt-out? If we do something different than what the state and OLCC regulations are? If we say, okay, we're not going to opt out, but we're gonna take local control as raised against, and we're going to say, you can't be within so much distance of this, 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 or you can't sell from here, here, and here? Do we still get the taxation?
I think you'd be in danger of losing the taxation.
I would think, but I don't know.
I have not seen anything that allows local jurisdictions or county jurisdictions to step in and impose regulations beyond those imposed by OLCC.
I think that's how some places said, local can impose reasonable.
That's what I was gonna say, I believe, I'd like Jim to take another look at that. I believe it does say actually that you, the only thing that you really can do is exercise some time, place, and manner restrictions, reasonable ones. And the final thing I was gonna ask, and I know...
There's a guideline on what restrictions you can, as a government body, so it's not a...
And AOC actually...
We can do whatever we want, you can do whatever.
AOC actually came out with a list of, or some discussion about what reasonable meant. But the problem is the word reasonable. And that has a big question mark behind it. You don't know whether that's reasonable till a court decides whether that... That's true. So it's a full employment act for attorneys, is what it really boils down to.
But when the court decides, you've got state laws to follow, and that's what you're looking for. Ray, did you have anything else here?
Well, I've got a lot of thoughts. They're mostly scattered. But I was gonna ask Jim a question, and this is, I just know, and I asked him before the meeting, and I just know that Jim does represent the city of Paisley, and I just am curious as to, I have no idea, did they impose a moratorium on, or do anything with regard to medical and what are their thinking with regards to this? I have not been asked to do anything on the issue, one way or the other, I have not been asked to even offer a opinion. So you may, okay.
Mr. Randy, I think it's next.
Question for Jim. Have you seen, in your studies of this, using Washington and Colorado as examples, have you seen any backlash from the federal government and any type of fundings to the state, anything being held back?
Boy, that's a really good question. To answer correctly, I have not seen that, but the question that was raised earlier that made me think along those lines, is whenever you enter into any contract with the federal government, there are lots of restrictions that go along with that. Most of them are things like equal opportunity, hiring, and that kind of thing. So, but I have not heard of a, an additional clause being inserted in a contract saying, and you will not participate in the sale, distribution of marijuana. So, I don't know, so I have not seen that.
I wanted to mention a little bit about that, Mr. Bailey, with the store different groups, go ahead, where we get federal dollars and everything, those dollars are not available for economic development associated with marijuana because of federal colors to them. Also, with Business Oregon, I asked Business Oregon, Mary Holzke, last week, are you, Business Oregon, look at this economic development, they said, we will not say that because of everything, when people apply for money, says it has to follow all local, state, and federal laws.
On that project.
So there is a lot of information that none of us have, there's a lot of things that are the unknown, but right now, everybody's leaning towards if it has federal dollars attached, it's no...
Could I add one thing to my comments?
I'm not absolutely sure.
These investors are not asking for federal dollars.
No, 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 I'm not asking for investors, the question was about federal dollars.
My concern is the federal dollars that trickle down through this county and up team number of different projects, from railroad to Skoet, that's a, you know...
Right, I've been visiting with Senator Wyden's office, as I said, pretty in-depth, and got a call back yesterday from Senator Wyden's office, and we know, he can't say one way or another, he's one out of fifty, or I'm one hundred, I guess, because we've got that many senators. But he assured us when his town council meeting took here, or town hall meeting took place over at the senior center, he assured those in attendance that Oregon has a state law now, and that the federal government in Oregon are working together to ensure that Oregon can carry out what our voters decide would be accepted in our state. And that's where it lies right now. Like I said, I worked with the federal bureaucracy for a lot of decades with a license to carry with it, and I know there's waivers, and they will step aside in certain...
So we've got sidetracked a little, I want you to...
So we have an unanswered...
Then Al, then Deanna.
We have an unanswered question.
I want to answer one little piece of that question, though, if I could. I was gonna say this earlier, but the question came up earlier about the town's geothermal and the federal government's funding of those projects and whatever. I just want to say that all of our north geothermal project with regards to the DOC and, we have at least with the Utley family with regards to a well on some property of theirs, there has been no federal money involved in either one of those projects out there. So there is no federal color to the money involved in those.
Yeah, and the federal side of it's sort of the unanswered, but everybody's leaning the way that I say is it's federal colors.
Al was...
Al, were you done, Randy?
I'm sorry. Al Monaco, Concerned Citizen. I really believe it's an economic development issue. I echo the same comments, those who have addressed the economic development issue. A hundred jobs is revenue to this county much greater than the tax money and much more certain than the tax money. If you want to talk economic development, you better say yes and get aboard a business that's legal and legitimate, that wants to bring big potential to this county. If it isn't successful, well, get in line with all the others that weren't successful. But if it is successful, it'll mean a lot to this county, regardless of the Red Rock thing, regardless of the gold mine. And I think that's the only issue you guys ought to be concerned with. All these others are ancillary and don't matter as much to the county, has lots of jobs and the potential for the revenue that'll come from that business. I don't care who the investor is, let's hope three or four of them come. Really good if we have three or four doing the same thing here. But that's the issue to me. That's where the economic advantage is gonna come from, and all the other stuff is ancillary that we can't control anyway. So economic development, solely, and that's my statement.
Deanna, you ready?
I am Deanna Walz, I'm a real estate agent with Arrow Realty, and I just want to ask you to opt in. We have already seen a positive impact in the real estate field because of the businesses that are looking at our county now. And they've already been mentioned, those three, and we are already seeing positive results in real estate. And that's just the beginning, so please opt in. Thank you.
Has anybody that hasn't got a chance to speak, want to speak before I go?
I'm Jim Sutherland, live up in North Lake County. Basically cannabis has been the number one cash crop nationwide for a really, really long time. So although we don't know the future numbers, we know that it's number one. That's not gonna ever change. It will be the number one cash crop because they took a black market price and then taxed it, so it will continue to be a really expensive item for a really long time. To not tax the number one cash crop in America is un-American, and that's really all I have to say.
Okay, I'd like to lift somebody over here. Mr. Jim, I think it's...
My name's Jerry, I'm the CEO of the Forty-Second Group. Right now, we're at a very early point of our history. We have opportunity to actually do something here, economically, socially, on many levels. But if not given opportunity, say maybe for a year or two, if there is an opportunity, we will never know. So the bottom line is if we do not know, then we cannot move forward. And given us such, and everyone has said a lot of good things about the economic development, combating the black market, but there's also the other social aspect of, do you want to be on the forefront? We have a perfect opportunity, prime opportunity to be on the forefront right now and take advantage of this for decades to come, for the future nationwide legalization. So it's a matter of the future as well as present. Because right now, if we do not step on this right now, take glasses of this opportunity, we're gonna let it all go. And that's the biggest thing. You know, not to mention the jobs alone, I mean, yeah, there's also jobs, the social developments, the housing developments, you know, we are all on board already. If Lake County wants to get on board with us, we will. We're gonna get our power there, as you guys as well. Thank you.
It's my understanding, and somebody could correct me if I'm wrong, that there's a fairly major project that is currently in an unincorporated county area, and that will be annexed into the city of Lakeview around cannabis growing, in order to permit it to take advantage of Lakeview's, City of Lakeview's somewhat more permissive... Lakeview's, city of Lakeview's somewhat more permissive legal structure at this time. Does anybody, is that wrong?
I have.
I know nothing of it as far as surrounding some-
If the Forty Second Group projected place where they're gonna go, it would have been growth boundary.
I see. I'd like you, I'd like the city of Lakeview to annex me as well. I'm up at the- No, I'm serious.
It's a lot of trip. I don't think it's a lot.
I've already got an operational business with several business licenses, including a liquor license that you guys trust me to look out for people's identifications, twenty-one and over, including a nursery license that I'm trusted by the state to grow and look after the health and sanitation of plants, including several other licenses, a restaurant license, a commercial kitchen. I have opportunities to grow, to process, to sell on a lot of different levels at an already established business that isn't in the town of Lakeview. I have offers to lease my commercial kitchen to grow edibles. We've got, we got documents on the table. I have opportunities to create jobs now. Okay? So, to the extent that it's possible for you guys to jump on this, we're ready to play.
We don't even know what OLC is going to tell us that we have to regulate as the governing board of the county. Right now, when somebody applies for a liquor license, we have authority to say we don't.
I understand that.
We don't know if that's what is going to happen with OLCC when it comes to grow recreational and all that. We don't know.
I understand that. And I also understand that my first statement was purely fallacious. Obviously, I do not wish to be incorporated into the city of Lakeview. I wish to be part of a really progressive county, though, that recognizes, in particular relative to my business, but also relative to the greater county. I'm twenty-one miles from a school. Okay? There's not any question about whether I'm a thousand feet from any other business or any, you know, that might be handling cannabis products. We want to jump on that train. And we've been in business on that train for a long time. So please, jump on the train.
Okay. Appreciate that. One more question. We're gonna take a short break because there's been a break requested. Mr. Brown.
Just one other question, a couple of questions. Does the growing of hemp as an agricultural product fall into this scope? Is any, I'm curious.
That was brought to me by Mr. Traubman. And if there was an opt-out, you don't want to do away with hemp because agriculturally, it can be such a big thing. I don't have the answer to that. Randy, it's a good question. Haven't been able to find that out yet.
You know, as a businessman in Lakeview, you know, I'll be on the train for-
Cannabis, get rid of your competition.
I think that's a given. My only question, you know, is a personal feeling of, you know, the social impact that people have portrayed as positive. And this, my statement really goes out to the whole state of Oregon, is personally thinking that we're giving our children another acceptable crutch to mind alter themselves. That's something I'm against. Okay. Because it will be acceptable, but it's already done. And that's all I have to say. Have a good day.
Take a, Tim and Ray, come back to the last one.
Why don't we have a Tim and Ray break?
I didn't take a break.
Yeah. I'm doing well, thanks.
This year, I'm way up.
And those are beer growers. Most of your growers are going down. It's a well-established trade. It's gonna be a big deal here.
How do you think on this trip, you're sure?
I'm a reporter for Lake County. So it's my job not to have an opinion, but to present what's being discussed and analyze and present this information to the public.
That's cool.
I've seen you at some of the gatherings.
Yes.
And I'm a friend of someone who's been there.
Oh, thank you.
You know, at events, I may take a hundred photos and we print two. So there's all, we do post a lot of the stuff that we don't print online. But inevitably, there's a lot of stuff that I'm the only one that doesn't send. And I just kind of pick what I think is the best of the best.
Right.
And we do what we can. For like larger events, we make a picture page where, you know, for a Fourth of July, or I understand, we may dedicate a higher page to a bunch of photographs.
Yeah.
And then you can have a little more any way of larger events, take photos all day and then pull maybe fifteen or twenty photos.
Yeah.
But there's always, we can't run everything. There's just not-
Anyway, I, I-
Right. Well, I think, you know, I need to write all the possible, I don't know what to put in there.
It's legal.
Chance to make money. Money talks. BS does exactly the opposite, right? I'm thinking, this is the one we should go. And I've been, the state is going to come back on every one of you, you know, count.
It's still kind of largely been up in the air. OLCC is still determining how exactly they're regulating things. And until the regulations are in place, that makes it get a difficult, you know, it's step one of twenty different steps that have to be done. But in the midst of trying to get that step one done, there's also the pressure on local counties and towns to figure out what they want to do. But how can they figure out what they want to do if there's no determined regulation in place for what, the cause and effect? So it's, it becomes blinding and blind. And it's a really difficult situation for towns and counties to move forward on anything when they don't have any affirmed word back from OLCC in terms of how it's going to be, you know, established in terms of regulations. So that's really difficult to try to definitively define something when at the state level, it hasn't been definitively defined yet. And they say, well, we'll send it back to town and county and pop out. Well, that doesn't help.
Right.
You know, they, there was the discussion about what is reasonable. And the word reasonable really hit through a major engine in town with Ray and Mike were discussing that they went back and forth with for months in trying to determine what is and what is not reasonable. That wasn't defined, what is reasonable. They were just told, they can just say that it's reasonable. Well, what's reasonable for one person perhaps? If it's not defined, what is reasonable? How are they to determine what's reasonable?
Right.
So they implemented aspects such as certain distances from schools, certain distances from churches. So that created another dilemma because of the number of churches that are in town. If you take a look at a map, while you're determining the distance, well, that's blocking out this, this whole area, this whole area, because there's churches located all throughout town. If you're saying, certain distance from a church can't be sold, well, that's blocking out the vast majority of the towns. Is that reasonable? Well, is it reasonable or is it not based on the definition? Because they didn't say what is reasonable or not.
Yeah. But I see, for me, though, you've got so many buildings that are not being used. You've got those mills that have-
Yes.
You're addressing it, accessing it, moving it.
You know, I've only been here about a year and a half, so I can't speak to how things were prior to my arrival. But I am a big student of history, and I've spent a lot of time digging through old archives and reading school yearbooks, everything to see what the town was, to think of what it is now. And I don't have to have been here for a decade to recognize there's a lot of vacant buildings. You look around town, there's a lot of houses that say for sound, where it can't ever be used. And from an economic standpoint, if there is a company that's willing to come in, be it Red Rock, or mine, I've read a lot about Red Rock. It's a biofuel, it's a biofuel plant. They have contracts with the US military, with Southwest Airlines, and then with FedEx to create jet fuel. And they will be producing jet fuel, utilizing woody biomass and leftover products from the local sawmills, as well as juniper removal that's been going on, you know, excess materials from our forests that aren't abused. Production-wise, can be utilized to a chemical process to convert it into jet fuel. And so they want to grow a plant south of town that would employ about fifty people full-time, roughly, both in collection of materials out of the Collins, property of the forest lands.
Yeah.
Collection of materials from, what they call a sawmill, and then people working in the plant itself to produce, will be around twelve million gallons of jet fuel annually.
Today, this morning, the military was in, they're giving thirty dollars a gallon. It's called green fuel. Don't get too excited. It's not the five hundred dollar, or two hundred.
Okay, we're gonna come back to the session. It is eighteen minutes after eleven. We recessed. We didn't close the public comment time. If there's any other public comment time, we'll take that at this time. Mr. Utley.
Yeah, my name is Terry Utley. Just to set the record straight, you may think I have a dog in this fight, which I do actually. The Forty Second Group has made an offer to purchase seventy acres up on Rabbit Hill Road in the corner of Geyserville. To set the record straight, we have a standing offer from the rancher that is currently leasing the property to purchase this land as well. I've been involved in economic development for a long time in Lake County. It's a very important issue for me. And I would much rather sell to an organization that's going to bring a hundred, a hundred and fifty jobs to this community. That's going to be a major impact. A couple of things, you know, some of the commissioners are concerned about the county voting down the recreational marijuana. You know, they didn't have say on what economic impact that could bring to this community. With more jobs, more stores, more selection in our stores, it's just going to be a huge economic impact that I think we need to consider with these decisions. You know, Budweiser wanted to come to Lake County and put up a major brewery and employ a hundred, a hundred new, new jobs, you know, we'd welcome them with open eyes.
I used to drink Bud.
My point is marijuana is, it's here to stay. More than likely, in the next four or five years, it's going to be legal nationally. I mean, that's, that's the direction this thing is headed. And we ought to take the opportunity that we have currently to make this happen in Lake County. And I really appreciate Ray's, you know, his, his comments about having some control, some local control over, you know, the products and, and, you know, the way these things are going to be developed. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Well, we need to think about opening up Danes again and making it into a process and plan all the empty buildings we have in this community. And I, I hate to see us put off these people that are willing to come here and invest. I've been in the real estate business. So far this year, I've sold seven pieces of property, and they're all for marijuana. So it's already affected me.
Wow.
And so, yeah, I, I see that we, we really need this. And we could fill up our buildings and make this place what it used to be. Culturally, it'll probably change. It's changed culturally since the prison came. We're not all the same bunch of rednecks that lived here twenty years ago. We don't have loggers and cowboys coming into our bars anymore. The culture has changed. And we've got to change if we're going to survive.
Any other comments? I have a question for you, Mr. Chin, that is a follow-up. And everybody needs to know today's information gathering. There will be no decisions made today. This is all information. I hear a hundred jobs, I hear a hundred and fifty jobs, I hear two hundred jobs. And I do have a, I ended up with an email for, you believe that it should be put to the populist vote, not by the Board of Commissioners, by your email that went out. But my question to you is, I don't believe that we, you, or anybody has any idea what kind of regulations OLCC is going to be putting on us. But you, you don't know if they'll allow you to have one job, ten jobs, fifteen plants, or fifteen thousand plants. As an investor, how are you feeling about OLCC and the regulations that might be coming down?
Well, we prepare for everything, every single step that they might take. In case they do limit what production will be. See, production of cannabis involves many aspects, not just currently. When I say two hundred jobs, it's not just two hundred jobs grown in a greenhouse. There's security, personnel, office, testing, doctors, scientists. There are also jobs that come from the buildings around us, support, economic support businesses, say restaurants, markets, whatnot. So those are all included as well. And two hundred jobs is actually, the estimate is higher than two hundred jobs. We need two hundred for our own processing alone. That also includes transportation as well. So even to limit us, we can still provide up to a hundred jobs, no problem. And this is given the worst-case scenario, say, compared to Colorado, or Washington, or any other current states right now, what they're planning to do. If they do limit us, we can adapt. Now, how many jobs are provided? It will subsequently decrease depending on if they want to limit it. But they do not limit it, or if they add lower limit restrictions, like Colorado did, then the jobs, the jobs will be endless. We can provide thousands of jobs if that's so become the case. And we're prepared to do so. Currently, if they do limit us, we can adapt to it. And, you know, we'll keep county informed as well as the city. It is in our best interest to provide as many jobs as possible. And as mentioned before, yes, tax revenue and generation. But we, for us to actually have a marijuana business is true. We cannot take tax deductions. So for other organizations to be able to live through that burden, it's going to be highly unlikely. Only certain companies and certain groups will be able to support themselves past the tax revenue and past the tax deduction clauses. So, yes, we're prepared to cover anything. We came into this industry knowing exactly how it is. We came in Lakeview knowing what the circumstances were. And we can adapt to pretty much everything.
If you lost one child, that's how many in Portland? Three hundred and so? A hundred?
I hear different numbers all the time.
Hundred or three, I don't know. If you equal the gap in Lake County.
If you moved here, you are one more foot traffic in the true value, right?
Yep. And I moved into town, so it's, it's, I'm not believing. I'm a newest resident.
I just wanted to know, relative to the peripheral businesses associated, integral to any such type of operation are going to be, for example, a security company who isn't handling any plant, who doesn't have any problem with deductions, and who can produce jobs that are restricted to that. And that's just the security company. The building maintenance company, this is a different company. You know, potentially associated with this company, but not under the same kind of restrictions relative to banking and insuring and deductions. Only the, the business that is actually handling the plant is in, has that quandary to deal with. And a business that separates itself into the proper number of units to handle the portions of the business that do not handle plants can legitimately categorize and deduct a great deal of its income and expenses as ordinary business expenses for legal businesses, which would be what my business would be looking to do as well. So.
All right.
So will it, will they still levy state taxes since it's legal in the state?
What are you referring to?
Well, you said you can't, we're not, the IRS won't have nothing to do with this.
The state's already got their hunk. They already decided how much hunk they're taking the state has. They're in, they're in the cut, big cut.
The IRS will take one.
Yeah. The IRS will tax you for illegal income.
Yeah, oh, they will.
Yes, you will be taxed.
Yeah.
It's quite a heavy tax.
There's also jail.
Luckily, though, this federal government has announced that they will not prosecute anyone following the guidelines of the state, if the companies are following state guidelines. Now, of course, if any of these companies say, you know, I'm sure you guys all- Now, of course, if any of these companies say, you know, I'm sure you guys are all here all tourists, well, they violated a lot of the state guidelines and this county and the city, et cetera, et cetera. Now, our companies, we're not going to do so. We're following every letter to the T, you know, every I is dotted, every T is crossed, is how we have to be. This is legitimate operation in the white market, this is not a gray market business operation, you know, we pay our taxes, we have to. So it's, it's more, the question is economic development. Do we want the jobs? Do we want the buildings? Do we want the new, well, new improvements? And that's the only question. Marijuana is gonna be smoked here, everywhere. It's not gonna stop, it doesn't change. It does not stop anyone from using it, it doesn't stop anyone from producing it. Heck, I can look on Google Maps right now and find it. I guarantee you a hundred percent I'll find it. So, so the, the real question is, do we want the extra money, the economy, economy to come to Lakeview? Will they come? I mean, and what I've seen so far, when I talk to people on the street around Lake County, and I don't just stay in Lakeview, I travel quite a bit, everyone is saying yes. And I've not heard a single person saying no. In, in fact, people that were against us in the meetings at first are now asking for jobs.
Well, they can speak out now, Jerry. Before the election took place, and they knew how, I mean, the sheriff could be looking over your shoulder, or the police chief could be looking over your shoulder.
I'll say hi to Sheriff's Department.
Now, that's not a criteria, you're, you're, yes, sir.
Any, any questions from the board? If not, I will close this. All right, thank you, everybody. We're gonna move on with our agenda. Like I said, there is no decision to be made today, this is informational gathering.
When will you make the decision?
We're gonna make this decision to proceed on the twenty-day.
On the ordinance one oh nine?
Yes.
On the moratorium. Did we advertise for a hearing?
We have a fourteen-day period that we have to initiate.
And we advertised for a hearing, and we have to go through the hearing process. I wasn't at the last one that was done under the emergency clause. This time, we are going through a hearing process.
So we might get the decision to go through the hearing process. Took one of my...
So, when will it be made? When will the decision be made?
I'll, I'll try and feel that. I don't think we know, but I, I can guarantee you it'll be in a public meeting.
Okay, okay.
Well, just, just so we're clear on it, the decision on extending the moratorium would have to be made before August nineteenth. The decision on the opt-out has, opt-out order to not opt-out has to be made by December twenty-seventh.
But to answer his question, I think it had to do with the bigger picture.
I wanna make sure that the decision to clarify what that was.
So, are, is it, there's going to be an announcement that there's going to be a hearing in two weeks on the nineteenth, posted today? I'll just notice, or is that, what's the deal?
It's, it is advertised in the Lake County Examiner for the, for this weekend and next week.
It already is.
Yeah, I had to put it in for last Thursday in order to...
Did you say next week?
This weekend, next week.
Oh, that's when it's in the paper?
Yeah.
For a meeting to be held on the nineteenth?
On the nineteenth, that's it.
I gotcha, okay.
That's, that's after the one thing, the one oh nine?
That's just the moratorium.
About whether to...
What he was asking, and maybe I understood that, he's asking...
That's just the moratorium.
Okay, but what about the, the moratorium expires, are, are you gonna continue with that and send out a, a message to the people that are willing to invest?
That's, it's on the nineteenth.
But it's after the fact, so it's already gone, isn't it, Jim?
The decision on whether to continue it must be made before August nineteenth, so that decision has to be made, it's not to be made...
On that day, that same day, okay, I thought, I thought it was...
Not the same day, it has to be made before that. The moratorium will end on the nineteenth unless it's extended.
And you're looking at having a meeting on the nineteenth to perhaps extend?
Is that the date of the...
That is correct.
Okay, so that's an important meeting for Lake County as far as the, the message going out to investors, for sure, so just wanted to make sure that that's what you're doing right now, what the county commissioners are up to.
But it's in the paper.
I haven't seen it, it's a paper out, I haven't seen today, as I'm sorry. And I, I don't live by the papers, so maybe you should release it to the radio and other people could hear about it.
It's County Ordinance Number One Zero Nine, in a matter of ordinance prohibiting retail sales of marijuana at medical marijuana facilities, is that correct? Retail sales, both at medical or in any other facility.
And if you were to stay consistent, as our attorney feels we should as a county and the city government being consistent, I'm not saying you have to come in line, that's your vote, but that would bring it in line by doing that right there. Medicinal operations could begin in, in the county under your time, place, and manner ordinances that you impose, and then at that point, they could begin selling medicinally, which then in fact, with the governor's signature last week, would enable recreational sales throughout the county as well, under you guys' ordinance.
Mike, without having an ordinance one oh nine in front of me and reading it, I can't answer exactly what I think you're asking.
It continues prohibition, I mean, that's what Jim's saying, an extension of prohibition, that's what's happening, and, and that's not a message that I feel should be going out from you guys. I'm sorry, I'm continuing with my, my stance on economic development and black market as well, so... But I, I just wanted to make it a point, 'cause it's kind of been, well, that's just one issue, but it seems as though the nineteenth is a very important meeting for Lake County and in citizenry who do, I, I, I heard no opposition today. In this whole thing of what you heard, I heard no opposition whatsoever. It was all supportive, and I would think that you guys could take this stance and grasp the opportunities, rather than sit back and wonder, am I gonna be elected next time? Because I've been through it, I know, it can take its toll. I got, I got slammed last week by my own counsel because of my stance on it, so I, I warn you guys as public officials, yeah, marijuana is a touchy issue, and I never touched on recreational, and I got slammed in my face.
So just for my information, when is the town of Lakeview gonna act on opting out or not opting out?
Uh, I guess by December the twenty-seventh, we have to opt out, but that's only if we change our course right now, we're totally open. I don't think there's a rule that you have to opt in unless you want the taxes, and I would think we'll certainly jump on the bandwagon before the twenty-seventh, if we're allowing it under recreation, our medicinal dispensary sales and recreational, we're gonna want a piece of that dollar coming in already.
Okay, so there isn't an agenda item for you guys to consider?
We have a work session scheduled, but not my muckies, not my zoo, and, and I think they put it off.
It was my understanding that one oh nine is the moratorium on dispensaries, period, not retail versus not, but on dispensaries. Do I understand correctly that if you opt out, okay, set aside opt-out for a minute, the, the decision on one oh nine relates to whether or not dispensaries in the county, not the city, but in the county, can operate, and that if you, if you choose to extend the moratorium, then dispensaries may still not unfold in the county, whereas if you choose not to extend the moratorium, then dispensaries may unfold in the county. I wonder if you could help me be clear in that, I understand that correctly?
I think you explained it almost exactly, Mike.
I'm sure after they're in position of ordinances.
The, to be very clear, the moratorium was passed before marijuana was legalized.
Yes, and about dispensaries.
So, but, but as a result of that, the moratorium addressed sales from medical marijuana facilities and retail sales, okay?
Okay.
Now, the effect of allowing the moratorium to end would allow sales at medical dispensaries. You cannot sell from a retail operation until OLCC regulate, pass the regulations in January.
Understood.
So the effect of continuing the moratorium would be to regulate dispensaries, the effect of ending the moratorium would be to allow sales at dispensaries.
Such that at the point when, let's just say, you decided not to renew the moratorium, then it might look reasonable for a businessperson with a significant investment in such things to consider the possibility of going after a dispensary license?
That's possible, they would still have to worry about the vote on, before December twenty-seventh, because you could have a situation where we allow the moratorium to lapse and then refer the vote to the, to the people next November, and the people could vote against it.
Against dispensaries or against retail?
Against everything, they could vote against everything. So, to answer the question about the business, they might feel a little bit better, but they would not be fully, have all their concerns answered, because they still would not know what the ultimate vote might be, and they wouldn't know what the OLCC regulations would be.
It's all gonna come in baby steps.
But it's also, as I was pointing out, it's kind of hypocritical to allow the sales of marijuana, which are gonna take place if someone so desired to do so, they could do it here in Lake County, in Lakeview proper, right now, as soon as they get all the committee, which they could be operating probably by the first of twenty sixteen and operate for a full year. But then the, the, the message that goes out there is rather hypocritical if the county sticks with the moratorium, and that makes investors wonder, well, if you're sticking with the moratorium on retail sales, which is all gonna be inclusive, it's all grouped together, including greenhouses, growing of the agricultural product of marijuana, the processing and all, it's all inclusive in the opt-out. And so, you know, you're kind of sending that pre-message to the investors, you might wanna look around, there might be a more welcome sign hanging in the communities down the road.
Well, and as I understand it too, if you opt out on anything, you opt out on all the tax dollars.
Correct. I think they're very closely associated, and don't discount the fact that, well, the one is later on and we'll make our decision on the one oh nine behind closed doors, and I know you don't do business that way, so...
Any other comments? We'll close this now, we'll move on with our agenda. So our next item, we need to, somebody with Paul Ann, she wanted to come back up while she didn't handle, we've gone down to petition designating newspapers, actually consideration.
Is there anything else related to...
Every year, we need a newspaper to be our newspaper of record for our closure.
Yes. We're discussing the matter of military.
Just, just reiterate what I just said.
All right, I agree. I agree. What do you see?
Any motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the designation of our newspaper of records that can examine it.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to, in the matter of designating newspapers for the publication of two thousand and fifteen, Lake County foreclosure list.
Can I enter discussion? Discussion, yeah. In regards to that, I'll go back to my comments that I made a moment ago, not everyone reads the paper, I'm not asking for monies of things that are happening in Lake County, but really right now, I receive no notices of anything happening in the county as a media here locally that is on the air every day, that I can inform a lot of people of what's going on, and so I just would ask that you at least inform us of some information of what's going on. I do receive the agendas, and that's, that's the only thing I get from the county, and so I, I would like to see a little more openness in transparency that might be going on here.
We went to Commissioner Keston.
Well, he, he was at U.S. Senator Widen's and commented on how important transparency is, that's why I'm here with my reporter today, transparency is important, and I decided that.
I made a comment of Senator Widen's that I highly respected his years of emphasizing transparency.
Yes, sir. And I respect that, yeah.
So, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carrying. Denise, would you please make sure that everything that is good for the, for both radio stations that are notified? Mr. Warren just had a question that he didn't put in.
Do you get my agendas? I just wanna make sure I said...
No, I did, I may comment, I get your agendas. I do get those, yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I'm sending them.
But that's, that's the only thing I get from the county, and I think there's a lot more going on in the county that the public should know about, and that's all I'm saying.
Not being transparent?
On every...
Backing the public should know if it's of public interest, I mean, you give it to the newspaper a lot of times.
Let's, let's talk after, 'cause I just wanna make sure I'm sending what, what you want.
So moving on with our agenda, you guys can talk offline on that. Economic revolving loan program application, if you please come up. We had the senior senator before us yesterday, we got an update of their application, and their application, we asked a couple questions, they've got that information to us, I think they'd emailed this morning.
And it's attached.
So this is for action consideration.
I don't know if you have...
They're asking for fifty thousand dollars.
Did you send it to me this morning? Anne, is this what you sent to me this morning at the H. A. D. Farm?
Yes.
You read on text?
Yeah. I asked it to stay true while I was reading it.
So to update, the direction after yesterday's discussion, which in yesterday's discussion we did verify that fifty thousand is what the amount that they needed, zero percent interest was the direction the commissioners would like to go, and then allow payment schedule flexibility based on what the senior center had asked for in later conversations. So yesterday afternoon, Andrea sent me the budget, it's attached to the back of this document that you had requested, so you can see, she does it with annual total and then month-by-month revenue and expenditures, and again, it's a budget, so actuals are what they come in at, so this is their prediction. When she sent that to me, she said that they would prefer quarterly payments to tie in with revenue they receive on the special transportation fund. So, I drafted our standard loan agreement and promissory note along with exhibit A that shows that fifty thousand dollar loan paid back over five years in quarterly installments. So it's twenty-five hundred dollars a quarter.
You have perused their budget, President Office Monday, do you see anything of, any red flags or blue flags?
Well, I, I hope that, you know, I think we all know either when you have your budgets tight, you have to increase your revenue, or you have to decrease your expenditures, there's those two options. So I wish that they could increase their under sixty meal income. We did talk yesterday briefly out in the hall about different, maybe ideas they could pursue along those lines, you know, really maybe trying to promote healthy options there at the senior center, so talked about that, and then on that same note in the cafeteria, I was, I guess, as an expense, I was surprised that their food budget was as low as it is, but outstanding, they must be negotiating some great rates to purchase that food, so...
About six years ago, I donated a whole pig to them.
There you go, so, and maybe that's...
Thunder fair.
That's great, like, maybe that's...
That's a very big thing.
Some of their costs they named things are there personally, so... So, this morning, we still just need to make sure that we're agreeing on their loan terms amount, term, interest rate, and then also the fees. The policy dictates a hundred dollar application fee and a five hundred dollar legal and processing fee, and so we need clarification on that part of the policy.
Yeah, I, I saw your note, too, this morning, Anne, and it just, for the record, it's on there, yesterday I wasn't in attendance, but I've, I've been tracking on this, I am gonna ask Mr. Bailey if he sees anything there, but as far as the fees go, I believe we should waive those.
The only thing to point out is that we have a provision here for default, we can do whatever we have available to us, assuming remedy, the only default is to pay on time, so...
Do you have a three-day grace period on time?
You could decide that as you wish.
I, I think it's, myself, I agree with waiving the fees, I think that this gives us an opportunity to help build and support the senior center, where they're able to reduce their overhead cost, comes back to the community. So I'm very much, matter of fact, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve no-interest loan, waive the fees for fifty thousand dollars for quarterly payments that have stayed.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded, further discussion?
I think on waiving the fees, a hundred dollars and five hundred, they're, right now, in a financial pinch, that's why they're here, and, but they have good leadership, and they got a plan and motion to make their senior center, senior citizen association center.
The mouthful.
The mall.
Very proactive for our communities. They also chose the northern part of the county too, indirectly with the, thus. So, in their current financial, I would also agree on waiving the two fees to make it more easier for them to stay above and remain effective.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with Commissioner Kestner's statements there, and I think all, I know all three of us have recently been participating in senior activities, so they've been really, I think, beneficial to that, that community of citizens we supported completely. And to Anne's point, you know, as the old story goes, if you're short, uh, you either make more or spend less. And I think as a board, we will probably continue to be proactive in, in our involvement with the senior center and trying to help them find ways to make things line up financially.
So, very well said by both of you. I know we're all pretty, very supportive, very lockstep. So, call for the question. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Anne, thank you for your work.
Yes, Anne.
Did we miss anything? But after the offer all done, I'm sorry. We got everything that you need to build it, get this taken care of with them?
No, so I can, um, they'll have their funds after signatures. I'll have her sign it first. Andrea Wishart said that would be okay for her to sign as the director to enter into this agreement. I'll have her sign the document first and then, um, get your signature. Well, if you're signing it right now, we do have that.
I, I think, as you said, you already signed.
She did approve the draft language this morning, so. So I know from personal point right now, there's nothing in there that she would change, so I can guarantee okay.
Thank you.
Um, I do have another topic, or we're hungry to start with that? I'll sit.
Well, um, Charlie was, I didn't already want to end up with a conflict. I think we're good if Charlie can't make it. If he's still here, we can wait.
Um, I think he was here earlier.
He was here earlier.
I bet he's here.
Okay, we'll, we'll move on down then. Um, we can do meeting minutes. We have. Instead of meeting minutes, we'll do those real fast. I have them here someplace.
She just was calling. So you, you were.
Your ears was there.
I just didn't see him in the office, that's why I was here.
Trying to find it.
Do you intend to have a locker room or a public?
We did, sir, we did.
Who's up?
Well, they're gonna do some minutes right now and then.
I'll step on my desk. Well, we're right here. Okay, we have meeting minutes of February fifteenth, uh, July fifteenth, two thousand fifteen. All three were present, so it entertain a motion.
I'm due to accept that minute, as stated.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Approve the minutes of July fifteenth as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Minutes heard, heard. Charlie, please step up, sir. We are now on Oregon Department Veterans Affair, two thousand fifteen sixteen support. This is good news. Charlie?
Yes, I guess you all got this already to look at it. As you can see, after our budget, we did receive an additional eighty-two sixty for that expansion enhancement portion of our, from ODVA. And out of this, I'm only requesting fifteen hundred to go into, um, materials and services to support veterans' activities and advertisement. And the rest will be put into general fund, which would be sixty-seven sixty.
Well, just for clarification, when Charlie said the rest of it would be put into general fund, that would be more of an offset, wouldn't it?
Yeah, we right now contribute to veteran services, so with this increase in revenue, um, general fund.
Support, basically.
Support can reduce a little bit.
And you talked about this, we ask those questions during the budget time, we have no idea what, you know, what's gonna happen. But if that happened, that's what we do. And this will be permanent money, so it will be.
So, Anne, we only have to take this in by doing the resolution, and that will take care of everything?
Yes.
So it would entertain a motion on resolution?
I'll make a motion, and that's what I have to, Commissioner, that we approve resolution number two thousand fifteen dash zero five, which will be bringing in state resource increase of eighty, eight thousand twenty-sixty dollars. With that, it will decrease the transfer of, to, from general fund in the amount of six thousand seven hundred sixty. And it will, uh, put fifteen hundred dollars into materials and services.
Well, so, uh, motion's been made and seconded to accept resolution number two thousand fifteen dash zero five, as Commissioner Shown stated. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yeah, just the way that was stated, winning one year and half the other cuts, there's nothing to be competed. We got eight thousand two hundred sixty from Department of Revenue, how many veterans state?
Oregon Department of Veterans.
And we put fifteen into your budget and extract out general fund remainder back to a general fund. Now, it was utilized in fifteen hundred.
Correct. Any further discussion? Anne?
Just to, um, make sure everyone understands, too, state rules allow this. It's because our commitment, I, it's. Yeah, AB County's funds cannot exceed seventy-five percent of the county's approved budget. We're well above that A level, and so this transaction meets all the state rules on these dollars.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. There should be a resolution in here also. I signed this here in front. Do you want me to sign another? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Charlie. Thank you, Anne.
Anne, thank you very much. So, we're gonna get down through here. Anne, ladies, I apologize, we jumped past you on that, but for Anne, who was here, she was on the set then. So our next item is union letter of agreement, mental health. Uh, we have two ladies here in mental health, legal counsel, and Jay, HR slash, uh, also section of negotiating team.
Tended everyone lineup. So. Mike's still sat there. So the ERB certified the, um, the union to represent our mental health employees. They previously were unrepresented, so back of April last year, that happened. So, what this letter of agreement does is just lay out the details of how we bring these employees into the union. This is, this is the result of many hours of negotiation, and I would just wanna say that the, the length of time this has taken to negotiate shouldn't reflect on the commissioners' support or non-support of the, of those employees, 'cause they do support mental health. But we feel like this is a, this agreement is a fair way to bring these employees into the union.
So, where the, I've been, Commissioner, probably most aware of everything. I, I definitely like for the other two commissioners, they have questions about it, as per the legal counsel to Jay at this time. Jim, do you need to give any overview?
No, this is just a process. They would start when they expand and.
Yeah, there's a process, and there, at the first part of the process, there was some delay from the other side, possibly from grants and things that they're requesting. Negotiations, way the different things get delayed both sides, so. We're here today.
So, Jay, can you clarify for me? I've read this, but I just wanna be sure on what the effective date of this is besides today's date when we take action?
Yeah, there, there are some retroactive parts of this. It goes back to July first of last year. However, a couple of employees, we, we were already in the process of assigning new duties and reassessing, you know, what they did for the county. And so those employees who took on those additional duties are, are going back a few months prior to, prior to July first, so.
They caught in, got caught in a little negotiations with, for days already being promoted.
Yeah, and, you know, we were, we were kind of in the middle of doing a salary study at the time they started organizing. So that kinda put our process on the back burner, but, but it did confirm, you know, we did recognize that, that there, these, some of these salaries needed to be updated. That they were a little bit out of, out of sync with the market.
I have a question for you, Kurt, because you'd be putting it in print. Have you claimed that it was transparent?
Yes, I am.
So, what we need to do is accept this letter.
Appreciate that.
Uh, motion of.
By motion of what?
Of part of it.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter of agreement as presented, and it is reflective of all the changes as the order of the union organization has happened.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? There being none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thanks to all of you who worked hard on this. The mental health department, Jay.
And their patients.
We don't have any.
So, so Jay, do you know the department that can do this retroactive, but everything taken care of right away?
Yeah, today.
I would be in the seat this day. I think we'll, I'll bring you one of the.
Thank you, guys.
So, do you, do you have a copy?
Thank you.
We, it only has his signature, so if he's gonna bring me a copy of it, I'll.
Okay, guys. So, all right, moving on down the agenda, let's keep a wrap. IT training update, Commissioner, who's creative assistant to these four students.
So, we did hold two sessions of IT training on our new policies, and I just had had a little bit of conversation with each of you on.
Denise, can I interrupt you for a minute? Just for the record, didn't you actually hold more than that? You just held them on two different days? The first day you held them, you held at least two?
That is true.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the correction. Um, we do have a number of employees that have not yet taken, um, the training. It's very important that they do so. We are, as you know, trying to put regulations into place that have been brought to our attention by SEDIS and other entities that we need to be following because of the information that we do handle. So, in those discussions with you, um, a couple of options for those employees. We did record the first session, so they could watch a video and still, there's a sign-off form. They could still initial and sign off on that form. Or, I'm not sure, I need direction from you on where to go. We could make it to where those employees are not allowed to use county. You know, give them a certain period of time, and we could make it to where, until you do the training, we can't, we can't let them on our property, our, our computers unless they are trained. They have to be aware of our policies for their own protection, for our protection. So, having said that, I need a little guidance from the three of you on what we can do.
So, I'll, I'll start this off, if that's okay. Mr. Bailey's been very involved in this, and she's been very involved in that process of pulling together the requirements from, from every entity to do with communication and the use of these apparatuses. I don't think we have a choice now. I think the choice is, is how we implement it, because people need computers and, and different apparatuses to do their work. But we do have to, and I just alluded to it, but we have to have a, a sign-off by everybody. Everyone, this is required training, this is required certification, that you understand the policies. And we didn't bring the policies up. These are, these are policies that we are being held to as a county. We don't wanna expose, uh, just internally to the county, but externally our citizens.
For our employees?
That's what I mean, either internally or externally.
And to that end, why have these people not, the folks who have not had the training, what's the reason for that?
One person just flat out is refusing to do so. Um, scheduling conflicts, out of all honesty, you know.
The person they're using, are they even using?
No.
Okay. Uh, then we're, I, we would have to take their computer away?
Yes.
It's, it's simple enough for me, is, is we've set the policies, we've offered the training three different times. We're looking at, I think we offer for them to do it by their, uh, by this video and sign off. And we put a timeframe on that. If they don't, then we put it off. If they're not able to use the computers, then they probably aren't gonna be needed to be at work either.
Right, and we, we would, uh, remove the computer and deny them access to any other computer in their office.
But, I mean, the, that's just, it's the way it is.
But there's no, there's no debate about this.
So what we need to do as a board is decide on a grace period for people, Bill, take the, and get this, um, we've offered it three times, that's done and over. We have electronically, they can take it and sign off now, given the period of time. If they don't do it by this period of time, then we implement.
Is there any reason not to make the end of the month, the, the deadline? How many people are we talking about?
Twenty-two.
Have not taken it?
Have not taken it. But that's including a couple of jail staff because of their, they were either on or had just gotten, gotten off of work and, you know, don't want to hold them for that. And a couple of deputies, we've really gotta figure out a way for the north end deputies and staff to have the training. Out of all fairness, you know, a lot of them are legitimate reasons, other than.
When was the first session though?
June seventeenth.
Yeah, I mean, this is three months to.
So, I, I, we can beat all kinds of things up. We got the opportunity to put the deadline by the August, whatever the last day of August is, for some reason.
I would maybe recommend the end of September.
Yeah, whatever you do, I mean, I think you need a deadline to force it, otherwise. So, but if it's, if you think, what you know of the book's schedules, then yeah, the end of September, but it's.
By, by, it's, it's electronically, I mean, the jail staff, they can, they can do it during work time.
They could.
The deputies can do it during work time. I, thirty days is.
You're working thirty days?
Twenty days is, in my opinion, whenever we've already went sixty plus days. I, we have the policies in place. We need to, it needs to be implemented sooner than later, so.
Me individually, I, first of September. Okay. To that end, what is going to be the record that shows that is they'll sign off on the form once they do that or haven't viewed it. You'll send it to everybody that hasn't complied yet, and you'll either get all of them to have their form back saying they've signed it or something, or we'll shut it down. Under that, guys, because Mr. Bailey was very clear text. I would like to consider the idea as priority sending this out, that Mr. Bailey perhaps send us his very firm, no-nonsense, clear-text message about this, and then this will come out under, a message to the board of commissioners. And that comes out under the commissioner's signature, that this is what's going to happen. And here is your opportunity to kind of comply over the next three weeks and plus.
And, and so, Mr. Bailey, this is all inclusive from elected officials, department head to employees? If there's no, if they're using county.
No, except.
All, all personnel that uses county equipment, so the text needs to be very specific that it's not just employees, it's anybody using county.
That's exactly what it's probably to, this time.
It's not that, or the level of employment or whatever. It's about our equipment.
For, um, for union employees, we can begin imposing discipline if they fail to meet the deadline. We would do it in writing, so they're on notice, so we comply with the union. With the individuals not in the union, then they comply by this deadline, or the computer is removed, and then returned to them once they get the training.
I really don't see anybody that's not wanting to comply. I think maybe there's a scheduling time. And if, if we run into an employee or somebody that doesn't comply, then we'll address it then. We just put, we put the notice out there and then we'll, we'll have to address it.
There is one department that the department head felt that the department head and one other person was sufficient for his department, so.
We will address it. Once we send this out, we'll address who doesn't do it.
It's cutting him in the ashery, but.
Yeah.
Okay. On the electronic webinar or video, is there a way for us to know whether they actually?
They have to sign off before.
From what we have is it.
Take them further word.
Jay actually has the video. I'll have to have him upload it to me or he can email it to those employees. However, however that works, but.
So long as we get it to everybody.
We need to get it taken care of.
The cover letter.
Kind of dragging out.
Yeah.
One thing I'd like to put behind.
Anything else on IT?
Nope, I gave you guys the update on our fiber connection increase with the LSN. That should happen by Monday. So, we'll be able to have a little bit faster and have our cameras up and going. And I did not touch base with Dave on Monday's install, and I will still be back.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we move down to legal updates. We've already taken care of the things that are listed on there.
Could I, could I ask a question in regards to that? In regards to your public comment period tied with the marijuana. I know in my own council meeting last week, they disregarded letters that were sent to the council for being addressed during the public comment period. I don't know which y'alls, I mean, do you not read those public comments when someone is not here? They request that you do that or.
That does come down to.
Yeah, I just, that's all I'm saying.
You just ask that it be part of the public record and be part of our docket.
Okay, I just, I just was wondering.
Mr. Trauman also sent an email. Did you guys receive the email from Mr. Trauman?
I'm not on this page.
I just, there was a request for the comment that this person had written, Susie Cahill had written. And it was kind of zipped it over and didn't get exposed until I had.
Be part of public record.
If they would share it with the public.
Anyways.
Have a good speaking.
Yeah. No, they're all part of the public record and you're welcome to.
No, you don't have to read it. I just was wondering what your policy is in regards to that.
So, on legal updates, other than what we've already discussed, is there any legal updates for open session?
No.
Is there any executive session?
Just all the secret business you want to do once Mike has to leave the room.
I know you don't get my business.
There are no executive session for you.
Okay. There being nothing further to come before us, we will adjourn at 12:11.
Were you going to do the meeting minutes? That's on the agenda.
We did.
Oh, we are.
Did we take care of Georgia's newspaper? I was coming in and out.
There's some people that's disrupted and don't pay attention to the meeting time and they get, they get compensated.
I was, I was in and out.
I got accused of sleeping and I knew Mr. Bailey had some more stuff.
So, we are adjourned.